Town Hall, we're going to be talking about the COVID-19 vaccine. And I'll be letting people in, so you'll see me every now and then kind of look away from the screen, but I'll be letting people into the Zoom room. Thank you so much for joining us today. We are excited. We are bringing to you a wonderful panel of experts who can talk to you and answer any questions that you have about the COVID-19 vaccine and your youth. We want to get our kids back to school to stay. And so let me first pay some bills. Our partners for this event, the City of Chester COVID Strategy Team, Rosetta Carter is an absolute amazing person. And I just want to thank her for all of the hard work that she does, that Ms. Smith does over in the Board of Health. This has been a collaborative effort between the city, the Chester Upland School District, the Medical Society of Eastern Pennsylvania, and Widener University. And we've been able to get some support from the Philanthropy Network of Philadelphia. So we've got some amazing folks to bring to you today. We've got Dr. William King. Dr. King is a pediatrician at the Pediatric and Adolescent Medical Centers of Philadelphia. And he's also the Vice President of the Medical Society of Eastern Pennsylvania. And so that's an organization of Black doctors that has been around since 1961. We've got Dr. Kai Turner. Dr. Turner is a pediatrician right here in the city of Chester. And she works for Penn, Chest Penn Health Services. And we've got Dr. Tejimade Akande, who is a Rite Aid pharmacist. And so I don't think I've seen a panel like this, folks. I have not seen a panel of this level of expertise, this broadly. We've got pediatricians, we've got a pharmacist here to answer any questions that you might have today. And so what I'm going to ask you to do is there is a chat. And if you go to the bottom of your screen and just press chat, we want you to put any questions that you have for the docs in that chat room. And I will read those questions off. We're going to go for about an hour today. And we hope to get as many of your questions answered as possible. But I imagine that we might not get to all of them. So here's what we're going to do. You can go to blackdoctorsphiladelphia.com. And we will post all of the questions that are in the chat room. And we will make sure that the answers to those are posted at blackdoctorschester.com. We will also post those answers on the city homepage. And we will post those, the answers to your questions on the school district's homepage so that you can have access to that information, okay? And so I don't see any questions in there yet. So I will go ahead and I will ask our docs the first question, just one second. So Dr. King, we'll start with you. We've gone through COVID for over a year now. Is the pandemic over? Doctor, we need to unmute.
There it goes, now it's letting me, okay. Hello? Um, yes, I am happy to be here, part of Black Doctors Philadelphia and a longtime Yaden resident here in Delaware County. And a part of, have been long associated with Widener in Chester. My, uh, my kids were, went to preschool at, uh, at the Widener daycare. So we have long, strong connections there. So is the pandemic over? No, the pandemic goes through phases. Viruses, uh, they, they come and go, but they mainly come and come. And we've, we've, uh, we all, I think Dr. Turner, Dr. Kande and I, we all have been in this. It's almost like being in a, uh, an ocean or hurricane, after hurricane, after hurricane season. And this is the, uh, this I think would officially be, was about to be the fourth wave that we may be heading into. We had that horrific amount of illness and death in January. But now we are facing a, um, a, um, an incredible amount of effort. Getting people vaccinated has really decreased COVID all around the country and here in the US, here in Pennsylvania and in the Philadelphia area. Unfortunately, um, as the virus changes, it adapts. And this new variant called Delta, we can talk about later. But this Delta variant is causing a resurgence of infection. What is so different this time is that the infections and illnesses and hospitalizations are occurring 95-plus percent among only unvaccinated people. So this is the first time it's been two different populations. It's been the vaccinated that mainly, if they, if they do get COVID, it's now a very mild illness almost always. And unvaccinated that also can have a mild illness, but they can just as easily have the same and even more severe symptoms. So, so that's why we're worried. This pandemic is changing again. And this time it's, uh, it's affecting groups not by age, not by race, but by vaccine status.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Akande, you've been vaccinating people since the vaccine was first available. How have things changed? You know, what was, uh, you are muted. And so folks, that's always the Zoom gremlins. Thank you so much for being patient with us. There can't possibly be a meeting without someone being muted. So we will try to make sure that the docs are unmuted the entire time so they can just jump in. Thank you.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
No.
So, so I did receive, we started receiving the vaccine towards the late, late January, beginning of February. And as you can imagine, we started out ruling out the vaccine with phases. So it wasn't just available to everyone in the public, which was quite a, a journey for us at the pharmacy. At first, there was a very high demand and basically just having to explain to customers just maybe why they would not qualify for the vaccine. And that was something that was very hard to hear, especially with people that had underlying medical conditions and really felt that they had to have that vaccine as soon as possible. And just seeing that big shift now where it's widely available for everyone, especially through walk-ins, appointments, whichever way they can get it. And just seeing how that we can have that opportunity to now get it is very amazing. Because at first, we did not have that opportunity. So it's definitely one that we do have to take advantage of.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Akande, um, I'm sorry, Dr. Turner, are you seeing parents coming in now requesting the vaccine? And if they're coming in, do they have any questions?
It varies. So a lot of the times I see families, including parents and their children for just general well, child visits. So when we talk about other vaccines, that typically does come up in terms of whether the COVID vaccine is recommended. Or a lot of times, some parents want to kind of pause when you say, okay, your kid is actually due for vaccines. And they want to make sure, okay, is it the COVID vaccine? So I've had maybe 50, a 50%, maybe 50% or so of families who are very adamant that they want their children to be vaccinated. And then another percentage that actually have questions about it, but are a little bit hesitant about moving forward with it at that moment. But I think that parents are coming in, especially at Chesapeake, because we're offering the vaccines for adults. So a lot of those parents who have been vaccinated do want to make sure that if they, if we are offering vaccines for children, that their children don't miss out on it.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're starting to get lots of questions in the chat. We're going to shoot this one to Dr. King. I'm nervous about getting the vaccine. If I'm nervous about it, why should I vaccinate my children? When we don't know what the long-term impact of the vaccine is.
Well, so, so the good thing is that, one is that there's different vaccines, but the vaccine that available, that is available for the kids is the Pfizer vaccine. That is an mRNA vaccine. And those vaccines, we know, we know that the, there is, the issue of long-term impact is mainly that we, the thing we know is true is that COVID itself, we are seeing almost everyone who is infected with COVID has some impact that extends beyond their mild illness. So COVID infection itself really can have very significant impacts on the brain, the heart, lungs in particular, even if you didn't have a hospitalization or a severe illness. So we don't know about the, and the reason is, of course, it's a virus. It's, um, it infects, it grows, it makes billions of copies. It spreads for many, many days, 14 days or more sometimes it takes to eradicate COVID from the body. And so during that time, COVID is really causing havoc unchecked. And that's different from vaccines which generate immunity. So the, the COVID-19 mRNA vaccine, one thing that was so tricky about its development that took almost 20 years is that mRNA does not last in the body. A matter of fact, when you, when you inject mRNA in the body, it is, the body obliterates it in minutes, sometimes even seconds. You can't even get it out of the needle and the body has, has chopped it up. So, so one thing that we, we don't really have, it's, it's, it was, it's an unusual thing about mRNA, which is that it was, it's this technology we think is so new, but really it's, it's quite simple. It's a simple instruction based, based on this little genetic code that just says make the spike protein, make it for three days, and then go away. And so we don't really think that that really is going to generate long-term impact because that mRNA is gone. It's gone in hours and days. So that's one thing that's, that's just very different about, um, this particular kind of vaccine technology. Now, we didn't know it was going to be, work so well. We're glad it did work, but it actually has been around and ready to go. So that's one thing that's really very helpful about that is that it does not last in the body. It, the immune system generates immunity that lasts for at least a year. And we believe, we're, we're seeing actually long-term immunity as possible. It might be a long-term immune response. Of course, it's only been a year, so we don't know. We do know that, that, um, the, for the Pfizer Moderna-type vaccines, that the, the immunity is lasting a year and maybe very long, like the way that measles last for many, many years. However, we don't think that the only effects that might occur would be from our own immune systems. And the good thing is that the COVID mRNA vaccine only makes, makes one protein, the spike protein, and that protein makes one immune response to that one protein. So it's not like a whole bunch of germs, a whole bunch of things. It's one message. So we are very hopeful that there won't be that, that kind of worry the way that much more complicated vaccines might be worrisome.
Okay, thank you, because that's been one of the questions that we've been getting is, why did it happen so fast? How can we know that this is safe if they just made it and they just did this? But it sounds like they didn't just make it, that this has been around, they've been making this for 20 years.
That's right, 1980s. 1980s, it was actually Penn, uh, some Penn docs who, who made some of that original mRNA type technology. And the, um, the female researcher and, and researcher, uh, PhD that really was working on this technology, they just looked at her and said, this is, it's all about DNA. mRNA is never going anywhere, you're wasting your career, you're throwing your whole career away. And she just plugged and plugged away. And she has been ready to go for more than a decade. But mRNA vaccines were so expensive to build the plant. Nobody wanted to spend a billion dollars to put up, to build an mRNA vaccine plant when you could build other kind of vaccine plants for a hundred million. So it was 10 times more, so nobody wanted to build that rocket. However, when there was a pandemic, you know what, guess what, the billions came. And so it, it really wasn't that things happened suddenly. The, the scientists and the technology has been waiting for more than a decade, ready to go, but nobody wanted to buy it. And then suddenly, when there was a need, the fact is, it's very, it's particularly the Pfizer Moderna-type technologies. It's, it's, it's really, um, you, you get the code, you use this genetic machine, genetic copy machine, basically, this $10 million piece of equipment, and you make the master copy. And you can, you can go from making that master copy to a full dose of vaccine in the vial. In 120 days, they're down to 90 days. And, um, they, they start in St. Louis, they, they finish it up in Massachusetts, and they ship it to Kalamazoo to get bottled, and then they fly it to PHL. It lands at the airport and it's, it's about 10 nurses that bring it around to all of us. And it's, it's an amazing effort. And I think Dr. Kande knows that, that amazing effort of getting these vaccines out.
Absolutely.
So Dr. Turner, here's a question. Will this vaccine affect my child's fertility?
From the research that I've done, I have not found any solid research to say that it will. And I actually spoke to a young lady recently when we had one of the vaccine events with Chesapeake present, because I don't have children, and that was a concern for me. So I think the biggest thing is to do the research. I know that there is a lot of misinformation and rightfully so. We should be concerned about anything that's new and anything that we have concerns about. I think that it is very important that we do research and that we do talk about it. But like I said, I did do my research because that was one of my concerns, just to make sure, not just for my patients and their parents, but also for myself. And I felt comfortable getting the vaccine.
Dr. Akande, how is this vaccine different from other pediatric immunizations?
Well, they're really not very different. I mean, compared to like the flu vaccine, which is usually what, um, typically we get every year. It's an intramuscular vaccine, you receive it in the deltoid of the arm. It's about usually a point five, just similar to, um, other vaccines, the point five dose. And similarly to other vaccines, it can be a typical series, just like the Pfizer is. You do get it one dose, and then 21 days later, you get the second dose. So essentially, it's not too different from, um, many pediatric vaccines as in immunization or administration and then side effects, which is something that we can also get into with other questions as well.
Okay, so what are some of the side effects?
So some of the side effects, um, initially with the injection site, there can be some pain there. It is also possible to develop a rash, which I believe some patients usually experience one to two days after getting the vaccine. And it is also possible to have swelling at the injection site. But the important thing to realize is, is that these will go away, usually after 24 to 72 hours. And then otherwise, you, it is possible to have a fever with the vaccine. Some patients do develop a fever, I believe, 12 hours after administering the vaccine. And then usually that also resolves itself within 24 to 72 hours. It is also possible to have minor headaches and some muscle pains or tiredness in the body. But like I said, those do resolve. Other severe reactions can definitely be analyzed if it does occur. But if there are any other severe reactions, we do then refer them to pediatricians or their primary care physicians for those.
So, um, we've heard the reports of youth with heart palpitations. Can any of you speak to some of that and some concerns? Particularly if you have youth who want to play sports, is there a concern about that?
Yeah, you know, I've actually, I saw, I saw the first kid, we, we just had a COVID clinic, um, this week, yesterday. And I saw the first kid who actually had, had, um, the symptom of chest pain. So this, this, um, this chest pain is, in the same way that the muscle gets sore and inflamed, very rare, that's very common. Almost everybody has the sore arm the next day with the Pfizer Moderna vaccines in particular. Fatigue also very, super, super common. But everything else is very uncommon. The chest pain is something that we are seeing in young people, youth, young adults and kids. But it is very rare, it's in the, you know, one in a million. But the thing that's important is it is some, it is from inflammation around the heart. But, but what we, what we know is it does require monitoring. So when that, if a kid has chest pain palpitations, you know, shortness of breath, that kind of stuff, you want to go ahead and say, no, 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 that might be, let's, let me, let me check in with the doc about this. And we monitor those kids. So there's been several hundred around the United States. There's been several million doses given to kids already. And only, and several hundred of these kids who've had the chest pain. They're sometimes up on YouTube. What we know is all of these kids, within a week or 10 days, it resolves. It does not cause heart injury, it does not cause damage. It can, it can be pretty uncomfortable, but it's really more similar to the way that people have discomfort with sports and activity. But what we know is that, um, that the chest pain associated with the vaccine is, is very temporary. It's temporary turbulence. It is not, um, something like the, say, the, the, uh, the blood clotting that's associated, that's been associated with J&amp;J vaccine, which is actually, can be really life-threatening or worrisome. But, but the chest pain is, is something that has been transient, it comes and goes. And we've been, we might, we have to monitor those kids. So you come in, we actually do an EKG, we watch you. In the same way, the allergic reactions, we watch you for the 15 minutes or 30 minutes because we're monitoring. Once after you're out of that, that, um, that stage, then you're good. So the same with the, with the chest pain, we have to watch you and actually watch you for several days. But then after you're through it, you're good.
And just to add to things, um, I know that our Rite Aid stores, we have over 20 stores just in Philadelphia that have been administering the Pfizer vaccine. And we do have a vaccine reporting system called V-Safe, which we do offer to all the patients that they can get on their phone to report any of the side effects that they might experience. And chest pain has probably never come up in any of those reported accidents, so.
It's, it's really rare, yeah.
So here's another question. And this is for all of you. What strategies do you use to combat vaccine misinformation that's spread through social media? This one, right?
So I think for me, um, the biggest thing is building a rapport with families. So if you see families pretty often for their other children's, the physicals, or if you're lucky enough to see the same kid, you know, more than once or twice a year, I think starting at that base is the best approach. Because at least you know the families, you kind of understand where they're coming from in terms of vaccinations. And I feel like they feel more comfortable bringing it up to you. But on the other side, sometimes you're, you just are meeting families, whether it's at a COVID vaccination clinic or just an acute visit when you're seeing the kid in, in our practice. So I think my approach has been talking about the COVID vaccine, seeing how families feel about it, and then engaging them in the conversation. So what are your concerns? How can we, um, talk about what you've heard, what you've read? How can I answer any questions that you have? And then share my personal experience in terms of the children that we have been able to vaccinate so far, um, since the Pfizer vaccine has been approved for the 12-year-olds and up. And also my personal experience getting the vaccine, or my mom, who I wouldn't have allowed to get the vaccine if I was concerned about it. So I think that that's where I usually start, just to see what concerns families have and what I can do to address any of those concerns.
So do any of you have children who are 12 and up, and have you gotten them vaccinated?
Uh, yeah, both of our kids, um, with my daughter, she was in college and, um, she, she was, uh, down in, in Virginia. And, um, we, we really were trying to get her the vaccine. It was so inaccessible early in, in March or April. And, uh, but, but when she got here, she actually got it right here at the Yaden Wellness Center, which is a part of that same group that, um, is affiliated with the, with the site that's going to be over in Chester. So that's part of Delaware County's action. And, and my son, he's, uh, 16, was able to get his vaccine as well. And that, that let him go and, um, and be up in Poconos as a, as a scout camp, as a scout counselor, because he's fully vaccinated, so he can stay on site. So it's been a real, it's a, been a real help.
Did you notice any side effects with them?
Tired, tired, tired fatigue. But you know, with teenagers, it's hard to sort out between, uh, whether that's their normal state of being or it's a real, it's a real change. And, and some achiness, you know, that's, myself, when I got mine, that, that achiness was, uh, was real pain per day. But, um, but then, you know, I felt, boy, a lot of relief.
Dr. Akande, I, I think I saw your light, light up. Did you want to respond to that question?
I was just going to say, I have personally, I don't personally have children, but I do have a niece who just turned 13, and, um, they're going to be going back to school in the fall. And she was, I was very surprised at her enthusiasm towards the vaccine, but she was very excited to get the, the first dose. And she thankfully did not have any symptoms. Um, although the second dose, she did have some fatigue, but it did go away after a couple of days, and now she feels completely fine.
So here's, go ahead, I'm sorry, Dr. Turner.
I don't have kids myself, but a lot of the teenagers that I've been seeing in the office, they're so excited to tell me they got their first dose. And this is the date for their second dose. And most commonly, um, like the other panelists have said, maybe just a little bit of a sore, sore arm, but nothing out of the normal from the other vaccines that we've given them.
Thank you. Um, okay, here's a, here's an interesting question. There's been a myth circulating about a microchip being inserted along with the vaccine. Can you please address that? Uh, Dr. Akande, I'll throw that one to you. And anyone else can feel free to answer.
I mean, I would just love to debunk that at this, um, point in time. According to my research and the research of thousands of other doctors, to our knowledge, there is no microchip in any vaccine. And, uh, my kind of thought process is if they haven't done it in prior vaccines, why would it be this one specifically? So, um, definitely we want to just, um, let the public know, let people know in general that that is not one thing that the government does in this vaccine.
I'd love to jump in on that, too.
Go ahead, Dr. King.
Yeah, you know, so, um, you know, my brothers are IT guys on the West Coast. And so we, we all, we have a little fun with that because, you know, the Pfizer, Pfizer vaccine and Moderna, you know, they're at super cold temperatures, they're at minus 70, you know? And, um, and so, um, that is just the most disastrous, horrible way to, to take care of a, of a microchip. So, um, there, it's, that is just not, that is not feasible. It is, um, way too destructive to freeze anything that cold and then unfreeze it and have it work. Also, uh, microchips, you know, even, you know, we were, we were surprised when we got the vaccines and we're managing them that it's all paper, you know? It's all paperwork. It's amazingly low-tech, there is no, we, you know, we were hoping there was a, they, um, you know, a radio tag for us to track things, nope. It's all paperwork, you know, it's all 1990s technology apparently. So, um, these are, and these are the same vials that we see for all the other vaccines that have been around 40, 50 years. It's, it's incredibly, um, non-technological, uh, looking. And, um, yeah, and the fact is, is that, you know, the mRNA vaccine, for example, it's six ingredients. It's a, it's a, um, a, inside is just mRNA, strands of mRNA that have that spike protein code. There's three, the candy shell, like an M&amp;M, is three kinds of fat, like, like, um, like a fat droplet, like a dipping dot. And then there's a little bit of potassium and a little bit of sodium. So it's six ingredients, it's actually very, it's, it's actually the most, uh, non-complicated vaccine that's been developed, which is part of why it appears to be kind of not having troubles. Because it's not a virus, it's not from a germ, it doesn't, it isn't grown in, um, in other, in other kinds of organisms. There's no fetal cells, there's no stem cells, it's not, there's no computer chips. It is a, it is a frozen dipping dot of a, of a fat droplet. That's why, as Dr. Akande knows, it is so tricky. You have to defrost it very carefully and mix it very carefully. It has to be defrosted. And, uh, so that, that myth is, is really quite fake. It is just terrible how silly it is.
So that's another question. Another question is around the use of stem cells. And I, I think I just heard you say, Dr. King, that, that those are not used. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so now, so, so actually you do have to make a distinction. So I've, I've actually, I have, I have patients who are, um, who are in the Muslim community and, um, and Jewish community. So, you know, so they, they've asked, and I've had to look into kind of very specifically Catholic patients. I've looked in very specifically, like, you know, is there, are there embryonic cell cells? Are there fetal stem cells? Are there, um, are there other, um, things that would be considered haram or non-kosher, you know? And, um, so I have to say, there is a distinction. So the mRNA vaccines do not use cellular technology, they're made chemically, biochemically. So they're not, there's no kind of cells, they're not grown. And there are no stem cells or anything used, or fetal cells, any of that used in the, in the research or the manufacture. So that's very unusual. So many vaccines made a long time ago used that kind of stuff in the research, even though it's not used in the manufacturing. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine actually in its development- The Johnson and Johnson vaccine actually, in its development, used embryonic stem cell lines in its development. So um, it is, it does have the distinction. If you have that concern about kosher, um, not kosher, stem cells, any of that, then you probably need to choose the Pfizer or Moderna. They're all safe, but there are, there, there is that distinction. So um, there is none of that in the mRNA-based technology. That just happens to be the way it's made. And that's what we're using for kids, the Pfizer, which is the mRNA.
Dr. Akande, um, is there any idea when the vaccine will receive full approval?
Not as of now. I know that it, specifically for the Pfizer vaccine, correct? Um, believe that there's an estimated time. Um, I have been checking in daily and I haven't seen anything as of yet. Um, but it is very hopeful, as it is very comparable to the Moderna vaccine, which has been.
Dr. Turner, um, so we can reach families one by one. But um, how about reaching into the community as a whole? Um, there's a suggestion here about an in-person school district meeting with parents to discuss opening the schools and what it's gonna take. What do you think about that? What do you think about kind of these strategies that we can take to uh, you know, talk to our, our, our parents?
I absolutely love it. Um, that was one of the questions I asked, actually asked, was anyone from the school system, um, the school district gonna be on this call? I think it might be a broader reach, and I think that we're capable of doing it. Um, I know that we do have a few vaccine clinics coming up at STEM, as well as Chester High. I'm not exactly sure if those are more panel-based, where we'll actually be answering and taking questions versus mostly vaccinations and giving information while vaccinating. But I am totally willing to do that, and I think that that's an amazing idea.
Okay, thank you. Um, what about children who can't be vaccinated? Um, docs, how do we keep them safe?
Everyone else getting vaccinated around them.
That's right. Yeah, it's, it's critical for the parents to get vaccinated, to protect the children, so they can stay in school. The, the kids under twelve. We think that the, the soonest, the, the uh, Fi- the Pfizer vaccine, Moderna would be right behind it um, for, for under twelve. They're good, they have the study almost done. Um, they have all the kids enrolled down to two. So they have to get the dose straight. It'll take, it may take three more months, maybe four more months. So that means um, we're done in August, September, October. So October to November is the soonest that young kids would have a chance of being vaccinated. So parents need to continue to use social distancing. They need to continue to use uh, mask wearing in um, in pu- public places. And um, but without vaccination in your own household, you are exposing your kid to the most likely person to infect them, which is yourself, if you're unvaccinated.
Thank you. So here's a question, and I'm sorry, these are all over the place because they're coming into the chat. And so I'm gonna ask them as they come. It says, I'm vaccinated, but I understand why there may be hesitancy. I often have some trust issues due to the FDA saying some drugs like Xantac are safe, and then pulling it. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I can maybe speak a little bit about that. Um, so just going off that example regarding Xantac. Um, at the, you would, you can never know what's gonna happen in the future. They can never predict um, production in the future or manufacturing, or any um, let's say, any struggles that they might have in the future. At that time, the product was approved, the product was safe for you. Um, usually there are recalls on cer- certain um, products. That's usually due to manufacturing issues, um, something happened to a specific batch, or just happens um, some effects that develop or um, that are realized in the future that cause a recall of that medication. As of right now, they have evaluated the safety and effectiveness of this vaccine. And, and it is ninety-four to ninety-four, sorry, ninety-four to ninety-five percent effective, and it's safe for you right now. And um, so that's what we're just going off of right now. And I completely understand the concern of products that can be recalled in the future. But for right now, we are standing by safety and effectiveness of the vaccine.
So there's some question.
One thing, one thing that's true about, one thing that's, that's true about um, that, you know, FDA and regulation of, of vaccines is that every single side effect is um, in, in particular for COVID, which is an emergency authorization, every single side effect is logged. And when they're, when they see a pattern, they, they um, they, that, those author, those um, those um, notifications go out to, to the doctors, come out to the pharmacists. So that, um, so for example, when we saw, you know, that, oh, you know, they're having this question about um, blood clots, you know, what should we do about that? They're having this question about the um, chest pain. So the, the allergies, so each thing, there's, is, when we get new information, we have to, they may, they sometimes will hold that vaccine from being given until we have new instructions on how to monitor. So for example, for the chest pain, we had to, we had to get those instructions. You need to watch for, you need to get an EKG, you need to watch for a week, you need to do this, you need to do that. So, so a lot of times what's happening is just, that's just part of regulation. It's kind of like an airport. You know, they, they ground the plane until the safety is clear again, then they, then they let it go again. So it isn't that, that everything is perfectly safe. Things are kept safe.
So there are some questions here about the Delta variant. Can you speak a little bit about the Delta variant? And can someone who's fully vaccinated get the variant? And is this vaccine safe against the variant?
Yes, um, so, so the, 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 the uh, the variation of COVID, um, the coronavirus, you know, the original one was now called Alpha. They're now like named after the Greek alphabet, instead of being named um, UK variant, Brazil variant, South African variant. Uh, with this Delta would have been called the Indian variant. That was really starting to make uh, countries angry, naming them after countries. So they changed it, and they, they go Alpha, Beta, Gamma, Delta, Epsilon will be next. Um, with Delta, what's, what's true is that every time COVID uh, infects a lot of people, it gets a chance to adapt. When it adapts, the, the new versions of the virus that are more contagious, more deadly, more um, grow faster, they compete and win. It's like um, like American Idol. So only the winner gets a new name. This Delta variant um, is, is, is the one that's bec- it is the most aggressive. A month ago, it was five percent. Um, two weeks ago, fifty percent, last week, eighty-three percent of, of new infections with COVID are the Delta variant. So the Delta variant is, is uh, much more contagious, meaning it spreads much more easily. We think um, with the original COVID, if you were six feet apart and you had masks down, we thought it takes, from looking at doctors and other people who were infected, we thought it takes about ten minutes of somebody who was infect, currently infected with COVID, breathing on you if you're closer than six feet to get an infection. With the Delta variant, there are some, um, there are some, some models and predictions that suggest it is one breath. If you're closer than ten, then, then if you're closer than six feet unmasked, then it really doesn't take much more than one person exhaling their current COVID infection and you taking the next breath in. So, so for people who think that their masks and things are gonna protect them from catching, you know, this, this new version of COVID, it's really not gonna be good enough. However, the vaccine provides um, excellent, the same excellent protection against the ver- all these variants so far. And more importantly, it is true, you can catch, you, so when we say infected, what we're saying is you got COVID in you and it start, it set off an infection. But um, with unvaccinated, you have an unchecked infection for five days that potentially will put you in the hospital or kill you. When you're infected and you've been fully vaccinated, that infection is usually checked at the nose or throat, like a common cold. Like um, and that's part of why our common colds are mild, is because we have some, we have some immunity to these other, these viruses. But um, so, so you can, you can acquire an infection potentially if you've been vaccinated. But you, you are very unlikely to become ill. You are, it has not been shown that you're being hospitalized and you're, and there's no sit, there's no uh, evidence so far that you're going to die from your vaccinated COVID infection. Um, and more, and also you are unlikely to catch it and become infectious, where you would, you'll be a spreader. Unvaccinated, though, all bets are off. It looks like it's, you, you're, you are much more likely to catch this variant, and you are much more likely to spread it quickly in, in less than three days, and you are more likely to spread it to more people. And you're more likely to become ill, and you're more likely to become ill if you're young from Delta. So this is another wave coming, and uh, the vaccine's still pretty good protection.
Dr. Turner, there's a question. Um, I think I already caught COVID nineteen. How would I know? And why do I still need a vaccine?
That's a really good question. I also had COVID, um, and I tested positive for COVID. This was in October of twenty twenty, and I still decided to get vaccinated. Um, I, I do think that there is some immunity when you actually have the active infection. But I also believe in boosting your immunity with the vaccine um, in order to just give yourself the best chances to, to fight it um, and to just boost your immunity against the, the virus, especially with the mutations going, going around. As far as knowing for sure if you had it, at some point during the, the height of the pandemic, we kind of stopped testing if you had certain symptoms. So some symptoms were a slam dunk. If you had it, we kind of bet all of our money on you probably have COVID. Maybe you should just do your precautions to try to prevent any of your family members from getting it. Um, so as of now, if you weren't tested, it's hard to say whether you actually had COVID. But if you kind of check all the boxes with the certain symptoms that are known to be specific to the coronavirus, then I think that you can maybe safely say you might have had the um, actual infection, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you should shy away from getting the vaccine.
And, and there, there are blood antibody tests that are, that ha- that give, if they are positive, that is a pretty good. If you had a symptoms and the blood test is positive, that is a pretty good um, evidence that you probably uh, you, you overcame a COVID infection. But they are, the problem is that many of the ones that are over the counter or that are a mail-in, they really have very, very variable qualities. So there are some, you know, doctor-administered, um, we don't, we don't, we don't provide the blood antibody tests in our practice, unfortunately. Um, I don't know if Rite Aid does. I, I think um, some of the urgent cares definitely do.
We do.
Blood, the blood test, right. So, so that, if you, if you had symptoms and your blood test is positive, that does suggest you did have COVID. However, your immunity from your infection does not protect you from the variants. And you, you are likely um, not, you do not have adequate protection without the extra protection that the, that a vaccine generates. Vaccines are built to just generate the immune response and not cause illness. So they particularly bump up your specific immunity against the COVID and the variants. Where natural infection, remember, the, the virus is there not to help you become immune, but to mess with you. So it actually, part of what causes so much illness with coronavirus infection is it really wreck, wrecks havoc with our immune system. So many people, I got an, I got COVID infection too, and it was horrible. It was, it was not worth um, taking the chance. And I, I tried to, to do everything to not get it, but um, the vaccine, I also got the vaccine. Remember President Trump, who got infected, also got the vaccine?
And how long do we expect the IgG to stay positive? So that, that would give um, you a better idea if you had it. But if you had the actual infection a while ago, even if you get the blood test, we might not know.
If it's negative, that doesn't probably tell you. Because yeah, we don't know how long that, that antibody lasts. If it's positive, it probably tells you you had it. But if it's negative, it doesn't tell you you didn't have it. So yeah, you really, it's that, that nasal test, now that's, that's the virus in your nose. I mean, when that's positive, that's saying that virus is in your nose. But um, um, the, also the, the blood test, actually, um, if you've been vaccinated, that may, that may give you a positive blood test. So, so we don't have a test that will tell you you were infected. It just tells you you've had, you've generated some immunity. But it's not, if, if you haven't been vaccinated, it's not enough immunity to be protected. We don't believe, the data doesn't show.
There's a question here. Um, is the blood test free, or do you have to pay for it? Dr. Akande?
You do have to pay for it.
How much is that? Or are you allowed to say?
Um, I actually would have to recall the price. I believe it, it was around ninety-nine, about a hundred.
About a hundred.
I had, I had antibody testing, and it was a hundred dollars.
Okay. Would you recommend antibody testing?
Certainly. I mean, if you wanna know if you've had, um, if you have some sort of immunity, or if you've had um, it in the past, then yes, absolutely. It's definitely an advantage.
You know, one other thing, one thing about getting te- tested to see if you had COVID is to see whether you have any long-term um, injuries from COVID. Because if you're having, say, brain fog, or you're having heart palpitations, or you're having um, chest pains or breathing problems, it might have been COVID. You might have, you might still be suffering from what we call long COVID. So it's probably more useful to get you to your own doctor to find out if you um, need to get um, followed and managed for your, um, the fact that you are not fully recovered from COVID. So um, it's not as, quite as useful in terms of should I get the vaccine or not? Because um, you really probably need the vaccine for immune protection.
Um, are the vaccines free? Do I have to show an ID or be a citizen? Do I need health insurance?
Well, if you do come to a Rite Aid for any of the vaccines, it is completely free. Um, in the past, we did ask for, but now we have been authorized to, we do not require ID. And if you are a traveler, so let's say if you come from a different country, you are able to get the vaccine at our location. If you do not have insurance, that is no problem at all. We are able to still process the vaccine and still give it to you that same day with no charge.
That's true for all the major vaccinators. That's right. And um, and it is, it is free because we, the taxpayers, already bought all the doses. We paid, the American taxpayers, all of us, already bought our dose. We bought um, a hundred doses. We bought, we paid for all the development, we paid for all the manufacturing, and we paid for those doses. So yes, you don't have to pay for it because you already bought it. So go get your, you already got, you already paid for it. So get, go get the do- the dose you already deserve to get, because you paid for it when you paid your taxes last year in twenty twenty.
So there's some questions here about the school year. Um, we have not received any word that this vaccine is mandatory. And of course, you know, it takes an act of legislation in order for a vaccine to be mandatory. A school district or a public university can't make that decision. It's the legislation that decides that. Private schools are different. They, they, they answer to uh, different authority. But talk to me about, what's the school year going to look like if we've got six percent of our youth that are eligible to receive the vaccine, only six percent have been vaccinated? What are we looking at, folks? And that could be a question that anyone can answer. In other words, if, say, say the school year starts and my child's not vaccinated, um, what kinds of chances am I taking? And what, what's that going to look like? Kids are sick and tired of virtual education.
So, go ahead, Dr. Turner.
Oh, actually, this is a question that I talk to parents about pretty frequently. Um, I don't know about your kids, but I don't think that most of my patients did not in particularly enjoy virtual learning. I don't think parents enjoyed it. So I think the worst-case scenario, we're kind of back in the same position again for a, an entirely new school year. And on the medical and behavioral health side of it, I've seen the impacts on mental health, on um, families not coming to the doctor because of COVID. And I think that it takes a big toll on everyone, not just the medical part, um, but just being able to be with friends, being able to be around family members. I think that that goes even uh, more long, um, has longer effects than not physically um, just being, you know, being in school. As far as what I predict, I don't think it's going to be mandated. But I do think that it will affect your child's education, um, and as well as extracurricular activities. If, say, for instance, your, your child is not vaccinated, there's an outbreak at school, how are they gonna handle that? Are your, are your kids gonna have to stay home for two weeks? I think that it is definitely gonna muddy the waters if children are able to go back to school and the majority of kids are not vaccinated. And it affects family members, too, when they come home after they have been around their, um, their peers throughout, throughout the day. And who knows who has COVID and who is not vaccinated versus who's vaccinated. They can bring COVID home to your family members, who might not be as healthy or young.
And, and um, and I, and I predict. And, and I, and I predict, um, if, if the vaccine rate in, in the Chester School District is not above sixty percent, that's the lowest rate where they will not be closing um, the schools and sending unvaccinated kids home for virtual learning. Vaccinated kids in most school districts will probably be able to stay in school because they are not at risk of spreading or catching too much. But unvaccinated kids will be sent back, so you do not have to get the vaccine, but you do not have to be allowed to stay in person. You will be sent home with the first outbreak, any, all the unvaccinated kids. So that's the real problem. Same with sports. So if the football team has eleven players and only four are vaccinated with the first player on either team who has an outbreak or coach or staff, everyone will be sent home from the crowd and they will have um, empty stands at best. And if the, if the team is unvaccinated, they will, they will forfeit that week and the next week because it will be ten-day quarantine. So that's true for um, for the um, drill team competition, for the band. That will be true for the um, cheerleading squads. If, if you don't have seventy percent of your players who are vaccinated, your game will be forfeited because they will have to send home all the unvaccinated players. The vaccinated players will be able to stay on the field. So that's the thing, is if you don't have, if all of your players are not, if most of your players are not vaccinated, you will not have enough players to field a squad. They will all be sent home for, for ten-day quarantines and that will be every two weeks because there are thousands of kids in the school district. There will be an outbreak every few weeks until the vaccine rates reach sixty to seventy percent.
I just want a clarification here. Uh, someone said, "Did he say we have to have sixty percent vaccinated rate in order to keep kids in school?"
Now, 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 that's not a, I'm not saying that's a rule. What I'm, what, so let me clarify. If, when, when there are less than sixty percent of a group of people who are, when there are, well, let me put it the other way. If there are more than sixty percent of people vulnerable to catching an infection, that infection will spread. When more than seventy percent of people are, can, are not vulnerable to catch an infection, that is, that infection will tend to burn out and so there won't be a big outbreak. So when you have those vaccine levels up to seventy or eighty percent, then you don't, you don't tend to have enough kids coming in, unvaccinated, catching, spreading to, to have outbreaks. So I don't mean that, that it's, it's a, it's a rule. I mean, it's a rule of germs. It's how germs work. So it's not that um, kids need to get vaccinated mainly because if, if there's a, most kids are unvaccinated, when the first kid comes in with COVID, all of those kids in that room can potentially catch it, even if they um, had, are trying to be distant from each other. So that's why we want um, those, if we can get the, the vaccine rates across the kids up, then there will be many fewer outbreaks. Remember, the Catholic schools in Philly, they got through because there were very few outbreaks. The parents were very careful. They, they separated, they had all that social distance and they had almost no outbreaks and they remained in school the whole year almost. The public schools in Philadelphia, they closed within weeks and they, they didn't open at all. They had two or three weeks of in-person learning. And the reason was not because um, they were all doing a bad job, but because there weren't enough, there were no vaccinated, they were all unvaccinated. And so outbreaks occurred so quickly that they couldn't, they didn't have enough kids who were not in quarantine. So they were constantly closing quarantine and closing quarantine. That happens when there's unvaccinated kids.
Well, this has been a very enlightening panel. Thank you. I really appreciate your time. Before you leave, let me just let you guys know some information very quickly. There are some vaccine clinics coming up. And so there is a vaccine clinic on Thursday, July twenty-second and Saturday, July twenty-fourth. Bring the kids out. It's a special event with the Philadelphia Union. In addition, there is a Chester partnership with community churches. And so the first shot is July thirty-first, the second is August twenty-eighth. It is sponsored by ten churches in the city of Chester. This is what's most important. What I'd like you to do is just screenshot this real quick for me so that you know all of the dates over the next two weeks where you can take your children in to get your children vaccinated. You can also take your children into Chest Penn. And so all you have to do is call Chest Penn Health Clinic and make an appointment and take your child right on in. It's easy to do, it's not difficult at all. And then you see all of these vaccine clinics that are there just waiting for you, waiting for your child. And so I want to just make sure that we have the survey in the chat. Now hopefully I've answered all of your questions, but say you get off and you have a question or you have a cousin who says, "Hey, this is why I'm not doing it." Well, you know what? We want you to send us your questions. We will take the questions in this Qualtric survey that you see in the chat. Just copy that for me and paste that into a window so that you have it. The survey takes about, takes less than five minutes and you can ask any questions um, and you can let us know what additional programming you want us to do over the course of the, the rest of this pandemic. We're trying to stop this, y'all. We're trying to get our kids back into school and keep them in school. Uh, Dr. Turner, Dr. Akande, Dr. King, thank you so much for your time and wisdom tonight. We certainly appreciate you. We hope that you will join us as we go across the city. Um, one of the folks said, "Let's, let's take it to the streets, right? Let's go out and do some old-school, old-fashioned community organizing and uh, take the word to the streets so that people know what's happening." Hey, thank you so much. I'm gonna put the calendar up again uh, because people wanted to make sure that they see it. We can also make sure that that calendar is available uh, to you. Um, but we want to say uh, bless you and thank you. Um, have a wonderful day and you'll be able to get the answers to your questions at BlackDoctorsPhiladelphia.com and we'll make sure that the city has the answers and you will also be able to take a look at this video again and we'll have that available to you too. Thank you, God bless. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.